Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the April 15th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. My name is Sina Nejad. I have the honor of chairing the commission with my great and able commissioners. We welcome you to our meeting this afternoon. If you would please call the roll.
Chairman Nejad?
Here.
Commissioner Beatty is absent. Commissioner Jabar?
Present.
Commissioner Javia is absent. Commissioner Javed?
Here.
Commissioner Linton is absent. Commissioner Macon is absent. Commissioner Noyola is absent. Commissioner Senagar?
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Harris is absent. Alternate Commissioner Sorrell?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. You will all send out the minutes of the last meeting, and if there are no revisions or suggestions and corrections, I would look for a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. We're going to get started with our first, PZ 2024-37, please.
All right, just before I start, I do want to let you know there is a correction to the staff report. I'll let you know where the correction starts because it does differ from the packet that you have in front of you. The Port of Beaumont is requesting to abandon a portion of right-of-ways in all alleys and easements within an area surrounded by Port, Buford, Carroll, Stewart, Herring, Lamar, Verone, Leeper, and Powell Streets near the port. The correction, they intend to develop the site to accommodate the truck queuing, cargo storage, and workforce development to increase efficiencies in operations and support of the growing needs of the infrastructure at the port. And correction, noting that streetlights and storm improvements exist within the right-of-way of said abandonment area. Approval of this request is paired with a property swap for the city to acquire land near Riverfront Park as a part of a larger interlocal agreement between the city and the port. Planning staff recommends approval of their requests with the following conditions. One, a drainage easement shall be retained on Verone, Stewart, and Lamar Streets to maintain all existing storm sewer infrastructure. Number two, proposed sanitary sewer plans must receive approval from the City of Beaumont Water Utilities Department. Three, proposed relocation of fire hydrants must receive approval from the City of Beaumont Fire Department. Four, any streetlights within the abandoned area shall convert to private security lights within a private property upon approval of the abandonment. Security lighting is optional and therefore billing for continued usage shall be transferred to the owner or the lights shall be removed. The item was sent to all interested parties. On your screen, you will see an outline of the boundary of the proposed abandonment The photos are looking down the street of the areas to be abandoned to show you what's existing within those streets. This is east down Stewart, east down Lamar, north down Leeper, and north down Verone.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for the lady? There are no residences remaining in any of these areas, right?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. And the applicant is Port of Beaumont. Good afternoon. Do you have any comments that you'd like to give us? If you please state your name and address for the record, and we'd love to hear from you.
My name is Chris Fisher. I'm the port director and CEO of the Port of Beaumont. This has been a longstanding project that the port has been working on since the mid-'90s and the City of Beaumont, along with the Charlton Pollard Neighborhood, declared some of this area transitional area. So this has been some of our port board approved area. We have about a $25 million project scheduled to go in there. Twenty-two million of it comes from some state funding, and so it's going to be a very, I think, a nice expansion of the area, and it's confined into the area that the port has been buying property for many years. Can I answer? Any questions?
Mr. Fisher, it says that it would alleviate some of the traffic and the truck queuing. Would you expand on that, please?
Yes, occasionally, we have a lot of dump trucks that go in and out of the back there. This will allow them to get off the streets and they can clean their trucks off a little better, but it's also going to be to provide for expansion of the port's outside storage facilities. A lot of times, we'll handle this project cargo or wind energy cargoes or military cargoes that require expansion. The project there is going to be a rolled concrete lot designed to handle heavy cargo and will store cargo on it in addition to making it available to alleviate congestion for any truck traffic that we have.
Thank you. Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Counselor, on my notes, it doesn't say about the public hearing, but obviously there is public.
So, this one isn't a quote-unquote "public hearing," but you do allow people to speak for or against the item in general. So that's always been your custom, so if you wanted to continue to do that, you can. If you want to do today.
Yeah, it just wasn't mandatory on my notes.
So, just for people who are here for the public hearing purposes, just means that when that item comes before council, they won't get to speak on it again. Items one and two, when they go before, they will have an opportunity to speak before council again, so if they want to speak today to influence your decision.
Fantastic. Well, all these folks have traveled here, so we might as well give them the chance to speak. So I would open the floor for public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Please, good afternoon. If you would, come over to the front and state your name and address for the record, and we'd love to hear from you. Good afternoon to you. Right up here. Right there.
The mic there.
It's been a while since I've been in here.
If you'd be kind to state your name and address for the record.
My name is Joe Brown, Joseph Brown. I live on 4250 Beverly, Beaumont, Texas. My question is, he gave us an overview on what they want to do, but I hadn't heard of anything that they were going to do in sections or whatever, you know? I don't, it's an overview as far as I'm informed out here, and I would like for him to break it down and what areas they intend to put this or that, or what is, is the plan that's drawn up, but I don't think he's indicated exactly what they're going to do and where they're going to do it. He just gave a whole overview about some streets, and I would like to know, kind of come in a little with some depth respective of what he's going to do and where it might be that he wants to do it.
Fantastic. We'll ask that question. Anything else, sir?
That's about it.
Well, thank you very much. You have a good afternoon. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like, the young lady in the back? Good afternoon to you, ma'am. You look like you're ready with all your papers there.
Good afternoon. I wanted to be ready, but this is not enough time to look at everything in detail.
Well, if you would, state your name and address for the record.
Famous Ramona Mohammed, currently reside at 5630 Nicole Lane in Beaumont, 77713.
Yes, ma'am.
I am a current member of the Starlight Missionary Baptist Church, which is located on Buford Street. So, my question is, what are the plans for the Starlight Missionary Baptist Church? Because, like he said, there was not any detail, but as a member there and as a community, a child who grew up in that community, I know that Starlight is still a resource for the community. And so, when you all are considering, excuse me, everything that you're going to do in this location, we see the port right across the street. So the language said "abandon," so are you guys wanting to occupy or abandon where Starlight is? And if, in that case, you know, we need some heads up so that we can kind of plan for that, and like I said, we are a resource, excuse me, to the community, you know? There's the food pantry, and like I said, since it's been established in '28, Starlight has survived and thrived. You know, there was a race riot in 1943, Starlight was still standing. The new building came up, which added value in 1983. And then now you have classrooms, five offices, a fellowship hall that also generates money. So this is revenue that will be taken away from us. You have a commercial kitchen, which also prepares, as I said, for the resources, which generates revenue. And then, again, we all who are members there, you know, where are we supposed to go? We have a lot of history here, and it's not just the history, but I think there's a connection. And then, the community is still there. So, you know, we still want to provide for the community that we still provide for. And so I just wanted you guys to keep in mind that you'll be taken away, if you are, that is an if, but whatever that's going to, how it's going to affect Starlight, it's going to affect the community as well and what we do as a family and a church family. And I may sound a little nervous because I'm kind of speaking off the top of my head, but I'm closely connected as well, and my mom lives only a few blocks away. So, like I said, you have the church family here because we're all concerned, and just want to make sure that we are considered in a beneficial amount if we have to vacate the premises. We don't, we need to make sure that we'll be accommodated to continue to be able to come back to that side of town and take care of the community, but not lose anything because we have a lot of updates. There's a lot going on in there, and we have a new pastor, and the church is growing every week. You know, so he's bringing them in two by two like Noah. So, if the overflow is going to send us somewhere, you know, we just want to make sure that we can rebuild. This church has withstood several hurricanes, so they don't build things the way they used to. So you're looking at a sturdy building. If it's going to be used for offices, then it's worth quite a lot. And those sturdy buildings, they don't build things like that anymore. So in order to be secure and safe in a building, we would make sure that we're accommodated to be able to afford the same type of materials that will withstand several years to come.
Thank you very much. You have expressed your comments very eloquently. Thank you, ma'am.
Your honor.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. Mr. Fisher, you had a couple of comments. One is the sequence of what is it that you're going to do, if you would please, and also your comments about the Starlight Church. We'd love to hear from you.
All those comments are very well received by us. We are very cognizant of having a good relationship with the community, Starlight Church, Charlton Pollard Elementary School, the Charlton Pollard Neighborhood Association. So this is phase one of a phase two project, but it's really, it's specifically confined between Buford, Carroll, Schwanner, and Port Streets. It does not go outside that at all. And actually, we know that Port Street goes right up next to Starlight Church, so the plan there along that boundary there is to have a little bit of a green area there and also build sidewalks. So we plan, when our, when our plan is done, we'll have a sidewalk that runs down Port, hopefully all the way to Schwanner, and then along Schwanner all the way to Carroll that borders kind of the non-industrial side. So we want to include that to make improvements there, but particularly across from, along Port Street, across from Starlight, and there are some homes along Port Street on the other side, we're going to have a green area there and set back our fence somewhat to allow for some vegetation to be planted and grown along with sidewalks. We have absolutely no plans whatsoever to purchase Starlight Church. We have been within the confines of this area that's been approved by the board, like I say, and it does not go past Port Street. There are some plans for the port to purchase some additional properties that we've been in discussion with Charlton Pollard Neighborhood Association about at the corner of Buford and Irving. There's a corner there that we've been asked to look at purchasing. We may purchase that. If we do that, it'll be for non-port industrial use. It'll be more like establishing a green area or something that's beneficial to the community in that area. It'll be a community involvement thing because we've been asked sometimes, that's very close to that elementary school, and we want to ensure that that areas within that proximity is, is whatever's going on on that, on those lots like that is a, is a neighborhood beneficial environment there. So we are, to restate this again, we have, and then the first gentleman that come up mentioned Beverly Street, and so no streets or no, no areas beyond Schwanner going to your north and Port going to your east is involved in this at all. So it's just a little bit more than what our first phase is, but it's Carroll, Buford, Port, and Schwanner. So nothing outside of that, and we know we're neighbors to the church, so we have absolutely, as a matter of fact, not only are we not going to buy it, we want to make sure we're good neighbors to the church and allow them to continue to thrive.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Ma'am?
Commissioner, one other question was, again, asking for explanation on the concept of abandonment, and if staff could kind of go into that just for the purpose of the public so there's a better understanding of what, what that actually means. I think that that would also be beneficial as well. So if you'd allow that.
Sure.
Absolutely. So the process of the abandonment, on the screen you can see the streets and the pieces between the properties that are kind of just grayed-out areas. The abandonment is getting the rights to those, to the private property owner. So where we see inside the red outline, Verone, Stewart, Leeper, Port, essentially, the port will be purchasing the rights to those streets from the City of Beaumont, and then they will retain those as private property while maintaining easements for the water sewer, things like that, so it doesn't disrupt any of those services. Does that make sense, or does anybody have questions on that? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All the folks that expressed their opinion and Mr. Fisher to answer those questions. We did close the public hearing, so now we're going to go into a motion for, for the project.
I make a motion to approve, P2024-34, with the condition.
There are four conditions.
Four conditions, right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in oppositions, the ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, folks. If you'd like to leave, you're more than welcome to. If you want to enjoy the rest of the entertainment, you can hang around. Come, come up here. Let me see what you need. Good afternoon.
Thank you to the Commissioner Hall. When they said, if they told us what the plans were, we would not have been so scared.
What would a good city be without a bunch of good churches? Thank you, ma'am. All right, folks, I said leave orderly, not, not like this.
Okay, we're going to resume the meeting, so we ask if you're going to stay for the meeting, that you remain seated. If you need to discuss something, that we ask that you step outside so that we can continue on with the meeting. Thank you so much.
That's fine. The lady wanted to thank the commission for considering this.
My name is, my name is Doran Nisby, and I'm a member of the Starlight Missionary Baptist Church. I'm a trustee there, have been a member for many, many years. I just want to offer our gratitude, our thanks to the commission, to the city council, to the port for considering Starlight's position in the community and the explanation that you gave us today. When we came today, we did not know the life of Starlight because we were afraid of what was going to happen because we did not have the knowledge. But now, since it has been explained to us exactly what the port is planning to do, and the port has been a good neighbor all these many years, many, many years that I'm a witness to, and we do thank you for the explanation. If we had had this explanation at first, we could have been at home watching television. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Great. I wish all of the cases were like this. Where are we? Yeah, I've got to find it first. Well, went to suit tags. All right, so we're going to go to PZ 2024-85, right?
Yes, sir.
Great. Go ahead, please.
Access Surveyors has requested approval of a replat of lots 11, 12, and 13, Block 1 of the Horton Edition, until lots 11A and 13A, Block 1 of the Horton Edition, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. The intent of the plat is to combine three tracts of land into two tracts of land to increase the lot size for future residential development. Staff is recommending approval of the request. We mailed out 19 property owner notices and received zero in favor and two in opposition. The two in opposition are from a Ms. Larry Lowville, I'm sorry, Larry and Patricia Lowville, and they're stating they are owners of the Lot 11, Block 1 of the Horton Edition. On your screens, outlined in red, is the three lots to be combined. And this is the proposed plat showing that the center lot is essentially split down the middle to create two larger residential single-family lots.
Great. Any questions?
What was the reason for?
They stated owners of Lot 11, Block 1 of Horton Edition, tax record, the tax certificates and county records show differently, so we did encourage them to reach out with both the county and the appraisal district to determine that.
We'll ask the surveyor here in a second. Any other questions? Okay, and the applicant?
Good afternoon. My name is Colby Bracken with Access Surveyors. We're located at 11025 Old Both Road here in Beaumont, Texas.
Any other information you'd like to give us, Colby?
Not at the moment, unless you have any questions, I'll be happy to be to.
Yeah, what is the conflict with the Lot 11? Aren't they your client?
So, this one is some slightly, I guess you could call it muddy. Our client actually owns Lot 13. So one individual owns Lot 13, one individual owns Lot 11. Both of those individuals own a one-half undivided interest of Lot 12. So basically, what we're doing here is to, yes, increase, combine the lots and increase the lot size, but we're also at the same time basically separating that one-half undivided interest. But I do not believe the party who claim they still own it is involved anymore. I believe back in 2004, that was deeded to a Brown, so I'll be happy to answer any questions further.
So who hired you?
So we were hired by Lot 13, Mr. Henry Brown.
And Mr. Henry Brown owns half of Lot 12?
That is correct. Joseph Thomas owns Lot 11 and the other half of Lot 12. And we have two owners' certificates there to the right of the page showing claim, showing ownership as it currently is to sign off on this subdivision here.
So legally, they're allowed to split the lot?
And that, that's why we're replating it, you know? In the past, they probably could have just, you know, separated it then, but there's, there's minimum lot.
Well, I don't mean to drag this, but if the guy that owns Lot 11 and half of Lot 12, and he's not happy about this, how could you replat it?
Well, this, technically, what's shown up on the screen is what they own to an extent, depending on how you split Lot, Lot 12. So Lot, the owners of Lot 11 and the owners of Lot 13, which are both the owners of Lot 12, are, both have to sign off, sign off on this replat, so.
All right, so they would have a chance to either kiss and make up or go their separate way, right?
Correct. So either they both sign it, or none of them signs it, you know? This is the proposal that we were hired to present. So we met with our client out in the field. This is what we came up with to split Lot 12. This is the new division line, and to subdivide the property or even adjust lot lines, we're here before you find people.
I hope you got your money first.
We'll find out.
So was it originally surveyed, you found the property corners on Lot 12 where they divided?
No, sir. We're actually making that new division. It's, as it sits today, it's three existing lots and an existing subdivision, the Horton Edition, actually. And so, we're turning those three lots into two, and we've split that one lot that was owned by, that is owned by both parties in half.
All right.
But it was never surveyed?
We have surveyed it, yes, sir.
You have now?
Yes, sir.
But before, it wasn't surveyed?
It was not surveyed in that one-half interest, no, sir.
So how can two people own?
I'm not a real estate attorney, so I couldn't really say.
That's where the mug comes in.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions for the gentleman? Thank you. Is, is, let's, let's do this. We're going to open the floor for the public hearing. Now we might get some clearance. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this, and that might shed some light? Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon. I'm talking about Lot 11.
Uh-huh.
Of Lot, where she just got those signed.
All right, if you would state your name and address for the record, then we'll get started.
My name is Patricia Lowville.
Yes, ma'am.
I live at 60th, 79 Chandler Drive, the property he's talking about, but not my, where I stay for the cost of the.
That's okay. So you, you do, you do own a part of?
No, I own the whole lot and deed. What happened was, this lady with this false deed, which I didn't sign, she got it drawn out from her lawyer. She stated that she bought the property from Segura, all three of the lots, which I got, and I got my lawyer to, what you call them? This, I have the original warrant deed for Lot 11, of Block 1, which I did not sign any deed over to her at all. No contract, no nothing. When she made this, whatever she did, this, her lawyer's son, the paper stated that, she claimed that my husband signed his, his deed, but he couldn't sign because my name is on the deed. So they, they transferred, I mean, you know, for the thing, because I never did return the thing, but I kept my original deed. Now, what she done, she, one night during the night, Mr. Brown came and put a no trespass sign over my no trespass sign, and, and he left the, the paper, you know, trespass paper, and he left his telephone number. So I called. So I called him up that night and asked him what he was doing putting the no trespass sign on my property. He said that he bought the property from an old lady that, uh, he, you know, he bought the whole property. He bought Lot 11, 12, and 13, which I do not own 12 and 13. So, I couldn't have sold her that lot because it's not in my name or my husband's name. So ain't no way that I sign any paper, you know, forging, you know, selling property to her. So she included 11, 12, and 13 on the property, like I sold her because she could, she could have got a clear deed if I would have had signed the paper, but have 12 and 13 on the lot, which is not, you know, it, what you call them, you know, I know, I hadn't got my lawyer to write her a, a letter stating that I couldn't sell her 12 and 13. Yeah, kind of.
Excuse me. Your time's over, but I would make a motion to, to allow her to continue so we can figure this out. Is there a second?
Again.
Go ahead, please. No, no, you, you have plenty of time. Go ahead.
Okay. What I'm saying, well, that night, the gentleman told me, um, I said, you better get your lawyer or get your money back because she cannot sell you Lot 11 because she don't own it. I have the original deed to thing, and, and the person that she named that I had bought 11, 12, and 13 from, those people, I don't even know who they are. I bought the property from Mr. Mrs. Worley, and, you know, that's on my deed, where she got, um, what did I say? She got Lisa Gura Jr. and Josh Segura, and I ain't buying any property from them. And Mr. Duris, so, he know more about it because that month later, he's writing down the property, taking pictures and, you know, during all kind of, what you call them, so, and the guy, he named that when I say take it to a lawyer to, you know, try to get confused of who, who you bought the property, he just kept telling me he got someone that to handle it, and he knows somebody in, in the city. So I just left it like that until I saw the survey out there saying that Mr. Henry Brown owned the property, and he, he, you know, I don't know how, you know, how that happened.
We know that you own Lot 11, right?
Yes. I, I only love, now 12 and 13, that's up to the other two person, but 11.
Okay.
You, 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 you understand what I'm saying, because I'm not a very good speaker.
No, no, you're fine, ma'am. Thank you very much. Okay. And the gentleman, yeah, hold on a minute, go ahead.
Okay.
I have a question. When did you purchase the Lot 11? What date?
Oh, okay, we purchased 11, oh, it's been so long, you know, I don't, I know it's in the record.
Okay.
Oh, sure.
Let me ask you a second question. Did you pay taxes on that Lot 11 last year?
Now, now, about the taxes, the taxes, she jumped up there and she go pay by the year. I went up there every year, she always pay the taxes, but I keep the grasses and everything cut.
Hmm, okay.
I bought the property in 1992.
All right.
So, the, the, her deed, what is the date on her deed that you have copy of it?
Okay. She tried to buy it, and it's not assigned or anything, February 20, 2006, that's when she tried to buy it.
All right. And you, sir, you have any comments?
Yes, sir.
All right. If you would state your name and address for the record, and we hear from you.
Okay, I am Larry, Larry Lowville, Sr.
And what is your relation to this thing?
Okay, I'm her husband.
Fantastic.
This is husband, and we purchased the property back in 1992, and we paid taxes until Brown tried to, tried to pull this, whatever she's trying to pull, and, and we just ignored it.
Okay.
Wait, are you talking about Lot 11 or 12?
12, oh, Lot 11.
11, okay.
No, not 12.
And, and what, what's happening here is they're trying to squat, are, are they trying to take our property and saying that they paid the taxes and, and, but I, I run several people off, off from, from the property.
All right. Thank you very much. You guys have a good afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Mr. Bracken, it's your turn, buddy.
Okay. Lot 11 it is. So, currently, Lot 11, by deed reference, I'm just going to state what we found in our research. Currently, Joseph Thomas is the record owner of Lot 11, based off of County Clerk's File Number 2020036225, as stated in the owner's certificate to the left. Where we've found, then we'll go back in chain of title. So from Mr. Thomas, he was deeded Lot 11 from a Bessie Brown under County Clerk's File 2020036225.
I think you have it in reverse. He, he gave it to her, not she gave, he gave it to her, not she gave it to him.
She sold Joseph Thomas.
Yes, but.
Lot 11.
Larry, according to the record, it looks like Mr. Louisville sold it to her, and then she sold it to Mr. Thomas.
That is correct, and that is based off of, back in November 24th of 2004, is where we see a deed from Larry Louisville to Ms. Bessie Brown.
Okay. Mr. Bracken, what's the urgency in this?
You know, I, I couldn't say that anything is urgent.
All right. There is an issue, right? These folks claim that they have the property, and I really hate to allow this to go much further, and if, if they're correct, which, let's say, they might not be, if they're correct, it just puts a lot more burden on them to, to get it cleaned up again. So... Let me see if there's anybody else that would like to talk.
Wait, my question is, they're dividing 12, right? Lot 12 in half, correct?
They are.
Okay.
And adding it to Lot 11 and 13.
Yeah, splitting it in half. 13 and 11 are getting it, correct?
Correct.
All righty. And who, who is it deeded to right now? Lot 12?
Lot 12 is between Joseph Thomas and Henry Brown, which is Lot 11 and 13. Two, two individuals own it.
And these are the Browns?
I believe they're the Louisville's. They're, they're the Lowvilles across the street.
Okay. But they own the, the, the lot?
They owned Lot 11 at one time, by deed, I have seen that.
Oh. So legally, it doesn't look like they own it, right?
No, it was signed by Larry Louisville to Ms. Bessie Brown with witnesses, so I have the, the deed references, if you would like it.
All right. Okay, thank you.
I could make some sort of recommendation to possibly have a title report or title commitment tied to the survey, but that's just.
Sounds like something that, let, let, let's, let us work it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
So what did you find out? Yeah.
I would, I would say we table this, but let him go do some, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, now, I think you've done, you've heard from your ma'am.
He did not sign the, the paper and stuff. That's what I'm saying. She's gone around signing and petition, you know, that, she, she didn't, she didn't put up no money, she didn't give him no receipt, not, you know, through any of these things. She just, at the time, they was working together.
I'm proposing to table this until such time that we have some more research in the title, and, and then Mr. Bracken will come back, and I'll propose to waive the fees of reapplying for this.
And that works. I just want to point out that staff, the city, and the commission as well, you need to be kind of clear on what documentation you would rely on. We accept the county's records as true and correct, for lack of a better term. And so if you're asking them to do a title search or do a title research.
Fantastic, okay.
To do, almost like a, almost like a sale, like what you would do for a sale of property to, to kind of determine, because the county wouldn't do that. All they would do is produce the, the records that the applicant has already provided. So I think if you're going to table, it would be beneficial to both staff and the applicant to know what additional information the commission wants to see so that they can come back with that, that information.
Like Mr. Bracken proposed to do a title search, right? Okay. All right. I'll make a motion to table this pending a title search by the owners and/or the surveyor, and I'll propose to waive the fees for reapplying and appearing in front of the commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. Mr. Bracken, just bring us more interesting stuff. All right. It's a good one. Okay, folks, I think we had it with our regular meeting, and is that not correct?
That is correct.
Correct. And now, we're going to have the Honorable Mayor West getting us started with some simpler ones.
Mayor West?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner?
Present.
Councilmember Durio?
Present.
Councilmember Felschaw?
Present.
Councilmember Getz? He's absent. Councilmember Neeld? He's absent. Councilmember Samuel?
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a joint meeting with forms of the City Council and the Land Commission. This will be the only opportunity to speak on the leave item today, the planning director of the commission to make a recommendation. City Council, the item will be heard for City Council, the next available.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to get started with PZ 202438.
The Port of Beaumont requests the blocks surrounded by Beaufort, Port, Lamar, Herring, Stewart, and Leaper Streets, including the approximately 160 feet south of Lamar Street, to be rezoned from residential multifamily high density to the Port Development District. They intend to develop the, the site to accommodate truck queuing, cargo storage, workforce development, to increase efficiency of operations, and adjust the growing infrastructure needs of the move, of moving goods and services to and from the port. The request aligns with the interlocal agreement between the Port of Beaumont and the city executed by Resolution Number 23015 in January of 2023. Staff is recommending approval of the request. We know, we mailed 67 property owner notices, received zero responses in favor and two in opposition. The two in opposition stating, the first one, I believe there was a miscommunication. It says that the Lady Bird deed property, which airs requests that the property not be maintained by eminent domain of a public sale of property known as Leonard, Lot 9, Block 6. And the opposite, I'm sorry, the next opposition states, "I veto because there is plenty of unutilized land to develop on the other side of the Natures River. It provided map coordinates. This could be used as railroad access or build near Strategic Fleet Reserve in Nederland." On your screens is the outlines of the areas that would be rezoned. You can see them grouped there in sections, and this is an aerial of the outline to be rezoned.
Any questions for the lady? Thank you. And Mr. Fisher, I believe you're the applicant, right?
Yes.
Great. If you would state your name and address for the record again?
Yes, my name is Chris Fisher. I'm the Port Director and CEO of the Port of Beaumont. This, this goes hand in hand with the first request we had for abandonment. This is rezoning of the property under, that's going to be part of the project, where we'll, we will, uh, put roll concrete in this area, and it has to be rezoned in order for us to use it for the port purposes that we, that we use it. It's kind of our policy to do that with all of our, all of our properties that, that we own to allow for our use. It is in accordance and in compliance with the interlocal agreement that we have with the city of Beaumont covering this, this area. And this is, again, phase one of this project. We certainly request approval.
Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We've heard from the staff and also the applicant, and I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve. Is there, and a second, is there a discussion? None heard, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Good. We're going to go to PZ 202446.
Cornell Price is requesting a specific use permit to allow two duplexes within the Residential Conservation Revitalization Historic District located at 2490 Liberty Avenue. This property is located within the Oaks Historic District and received design approval from the Historic Landmark Commission in November of 2023. Due to the proposed orientation of the duplexes, Mr. Price sought a variance to the rear yard setback to be reduced from 25 feet to 18 feet, and the Board of Adjustment approved said request in January of 2024. This proposal is in compliance with the lot area requirements of Section 2803.024B1 District Area and Height Regulations of the City's Code of Ordinances. According to our city's comprehensive plan, the property is located within the stable area, and such areas are built-up areas which are generally characterized by good to excellent structural conditions and neighborhoods that are free from blighted influences such as incompatible land uses, dilapidated and delect buildings, and deteriorated or poor public infrastructure. vacant parcels which may exist are good to excellent development sites, and this request appears to align with our city's comprehensive plan of Beaumont. Staff is recommending approval of the request with the following conditions. One, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow pre-treatment and/or fog program. Two, construction plans shall comply with all applicable fire and building codes requirements, and note that final occupancy is approval to sub, is approval is subject to review and acceptance of submitted plans and filled inspections to verify compliance with applicable codes. Staff mailed 24 property owner notices. We received zero in favor and three in opposition. The first opposition states that "I went through extreme hearings with the Oaks District Board over having the possibility of my car being parked in front of my home, as it would have obstructed the view of my home. It cost me $10,000 to pour a second driveway, and it's contradictory to now approve a multifamily dwelling to duplexes, which will have more vehicles across the street from me, possibly renters who won't put value or money into preserving this neighborhood. I adamantly say no to more than a single-family dwelling with the same parking, driveway I adamantly say no to more than a single family dwelling with the same parking driveways as the rest of us. This, other two oppositions have no notes, so it's just the one note for those. On your screens, um, outlined in red is the proposed location of the two duplexes. An aerial view of the vacant lot. This is the site plan showing the two duplexes they will front Ninth Street. This is the approved elevation by the Historic Landmark Commission. Each duplex will have a single car garage. And then these are the subject, this is the subject property. East, south, west and north of the property.
Any questions? Thank you. Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, sir. Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Cornell Price. Address is fifty sixteen O Dollar.
Great. Go ahead, Mr. Price. We'd love to hear from you.
I was wondering, do y'all have any questions?
It's going to be two bedroom or three bedroom?
Three bedrooms, two baths.
How many parking spots do you have?
Each, each, um, it'd be about four parking spots per unit.
So you have eight total?
That's included the garage.
So you go to eight total, right?
Correct.
All right.
Can you read the first opposition one more time?
Sure. Um, sorry, I tried to.
And, and tell me, if you go to your map, I, I'd like to know where that person is.
Okay. So actually, her residence is not, um, adjacent here. She does have an office to the southwest corner across Liberty. She has a business office there. Her residence is further down Liberty.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't need to, I don't need you to read it. Okay. Thank you. All right, sir. So, uh, have you talked to any of the neighbors or you busy with any of them?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
We're going to do this. So you'll have a chance to speak when it's time appropriate. Just kind of not yell out that, that disturbs my soul. So we're going to ask that everybody who speaks speaks at the podium.
Any questions for the gentleman? All right. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Now, we're going to open the floor for the public hearing and you, sir, in the back, we'd love to hear from you. If you would state your name and address for the record.
My name is William Avery. I stay on twenty-four eighty Liberty Street. That lot is next door to me.
All right, sir. So go ahead.
I'm not a public speaker, so.
It's okay. I'm not either. We're just.
All right. This piece of paper that is sent, I never received this in the mail. But my neighbor Christie, the same one that brought you the, uh, that's the quest of that, gave me a copy of it.
Okay.
So, uh, I'd just like to say that, uh, I've been in Beaumont at that address right next to the Red. Uh, I'm right on the side of it. Uh, I've been at that address since nineteen ninety-one. When I bought that, the property was priced at thirty, thirty thousand dollars. I bought it. Uh, worked shift work, nights and days. Weekend I worked, been putting in many hours. I raised four kids in that house right there. The duplex that he's planning on building, uh, especially with it being two-story, they'll be able to look right in my backyard. And, uh, what type of neighbors would be there? I stay on Liberty Street. There's a lot of violence there. You go on the website and look up, uh, the crime rate in Beaumont. I know that apartments in that neighborhood brings in drugs. Not, not saying that he's going to do it. I'm not saying that. But advance ten years. Now, I'm fifty-five years old. Ten years from now, I'm sixty-five. Who's going to be my neighbors? Who's going to be looking in my backyard? What my wife going to do? If something happened to me, God's sake, what my wife going to be doing? Tax value is going to be. If you build that in my neighborhood, the tax property going to go up in my neighborhood. How my wife going to pay that? The city of Beaumont, uh, probably a block over, maybe three blocks down, they approve for homeless people to say that. Two houses to the, to the, uh, west of me, just two houses. That's a drug dealer house right there. I watch the same homeless people that the city have put up, uh, uh, porta johns and tents for them. And I watch some same people go for tents to these houses. Now, Mr., I don't know your name, brother. Huh? Cornell. Mr. Cornell, you a good man. You, I prob, I, I know you want to make a, make money off that vacant land there. But advance ten years, twenty years, something happened, you pass on. Who owns that property now? Will it be a slumlord? What about my kids who I plan on leaving my house to? I'm passionate. I'm not angry. I'm passionate. My grandchildren, I plan on leaving my house to. I work hard. I'm fighting my house now. Miss, uh, Christie, who you have the complaint from today? She, yeah, she went through all kind of red tape, just to build a driveway there. Now, we in Old Town. You supposed to build houses up to Old Town standards. How you going to build that duplex back up to Old Town standards? I want to know that. I can't park on my grass. I know I ain't got much time. Like I said, you don't give enough time nor enough paper for me to write how I feel about apartments being built there. Because if you go down Liberty Street, you will see apartments and apartments. Go down there, there's some burnt, there's stabbing going on there. Put up the crime rate just on Liberty Street and look at the red flags in that area. And this is conducive to apartment. You know what's wrong with Old Town on Liberty Street? Apartments. You want to play there, but I stay there.
You don't think I'm going to bring baggage to your area?
Baggage to my area? No, we got apartments all down the house. You're running neighbors like me who pay taxes in that area out. And know what they do when they run out? They turn them into halfway houses, which is conducive to child molesters and pedophiles. I, just drive down Liberty. I can point you to every one that while neighbors have moved out, turned it into, uh, uh, halfway houses or put it up for rent. I can show you on that same street. Like I said, I'm not angry. I'm passionate.
All right. Thank you very much.
Um, Commissioner, there were some statements made that need to be corrected as it relates to, uh, the encampment that is in that area. The city has not provided any services such as porta potties, tents or any other services of any sort.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
This is Old Town and I, I elect to get them out the neighborhood if that's the case.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask a question of this?
Thank you for being here.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard. So, uh, now we're going to go back to the gentleman with the house. You heard, you heard the complaints and, uh, you have a chance to, uh, tell us what you're going to do to make the neighborhood happy.
First of all, we're going to comply with all the restrictions and stipulations the Oaks District requires. We're going to build a nice property and we're not going to invest this type of money in the area just to rent to anybody. We're going to do screen checks, credit checks, um, employment also.
You have a bit upscale.
Correct.
Upscale.
Correct. And he said something about property tax. Tax is going to go up regardless, we build this or not. And, um, I hate for him to feel that way, but I promise he'll be happy once he see the project.
So you do have a system how to vet the applicants, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Do you, do you have other duplexes or apartments or anything like that?
I own several properties in the city of Beaumont and I own several and sold some in Oaks Historic District. I've been building homes since two thousand and four.
Does the police visit any of your properties?
No, no.
Okay. I mean, I'm just asking that one to make sure that.
No, sir. He just assumed, he assuming what's going to be built or how it's going to be ran, but it's, he don't know the actual facts or how it's going to be done.
All right. Any questions for the gentleman?
I don't want to ask you a question. On your other properties, uh, did you have any security cameras or anything that?
Any what?
Security cameras or something that?
I mean, the homeowners can, um, put a security camera. Actually, it says duplexes. It take five units to be on a commercial project, so it's actually duplexes. He's saying apartments in Old Town, it's like ten units down the street he talking about, but it's not conducive to this.
So these are basically two families, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And the rent going to be probably around seventeen hundred dollars a month and nobody's coming out to, um, damage the property at that price.
We've got a high rent.
I would, I would like to clarify, I'm sorry.
Five, four, three bedroom, two baths, one car garage.
There will be four total units, so it's two duplexes. So, but there will be four total units.
Correct.
Four families.
Four families. Four families.
Okay.
We have landscape greenery. We have a fence around the property, concrete driveway.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
We've heard from the staff and also the neighbors and the owner and, uh, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for putting up with us. This was the last case and we beg you to let us go home. Thank you.